Are there any questions about any items on the agenda? Or are there any other items that people would like to talk about at the briefing meeting today? Okay, one other question. Do we have a personnel meeting scheduled between this meeting and the regular meeting? To follow up on the personnel issue we were discussing two weeks ago?
Yes, we don't have a lot on this. We didn't publicize it as that. We were thinking it was part of your five o'clock meeting. So we did not publicize a closed session.
Okay, but we will need to have a closed session to discuss that.
finalize that, yes, sir.
Okay, well, why don't we? Let's get through the agenda items here and we'll figure out the right time to do that either before or after, whatever makes sense. Okay. Very good. Well, the first item on our agenda is multimodal update and sidewalk maintenance agreement. And Nate Pennington is going to help us out on this issue.
And we have a short presentation that will queue up for you guys. Just a few slides here. Good afternoon. Nathan Pennington here. I'm going to walk you through this presentation. We're going to talk about two items. One is just a short policy discussion on sidewalk and multimodal options in the county, and then a specific request. So we know that we're growing as a county. We know we continue to urbanize. There are dynamics in this county that are beyond our control. We've lost two ETJs, the extraterritorial jurisdictions in Weaverville and Asheville, and those were quickly urbanizing areas. We have examples across the county where we actually do have sidewalk infrastructure that's intact, whether that was built in the former ETJ or in areas that are quickly urbanizing, or as part of a project with the NCDOT as they've completed some of the projects in the county. And we're going to give specific examples. We're going to run through a couple of scenarios where we have the opportunity to leverage the ability for another agency to build sidewalk. And we're going to talk about some changes on the safe routes to school and the complete streets policy, a little comprehensive planning, and then maintenance options for these areas where sidewalks have been built or are envisioned to be built in the future. As you can see from this map here, our more urban areas fall into the areas that are just outside of jurisdictions of Black Mountain, Weaverville, Asheville, Woodfin, those particular areas. The green areas are areas where we're going to give examples of sidewalk infrastructure that already exist. And the red one represents a project on New Lester Highway we're going to talk about in just a second. These are three specific examples that I put up here. They should all look fairly familiar. You have Jacob Home. This is a project that was built in the former ETJ where you actually do have sidewalk that's intact. We have a school that's in that area as well as a number of industries. You can see some crosswalks that have been done in conjunction with the NCDOT. The Emma North Louisiana, that's an example of a sidewalk project that was built with safe routes to school money when that money was available. And it serves the school in that area. And it's important because there's going to be another early childhood education center that's going to be built on that school campus. The next one is Swanonoa East Haven. As you all know, East Haven is quickly being constructed and will be finished out. And we're actually seeing a functioning node here where we're getting a more dense residential pattern in conjunction with a shopping center, the Ingalls Market. So there have been some changes on the NCDOT side of things. And what they've done is they've said that, okay, we're going to build a project. We're going to widen a road. We're going to widen Sweeten Creek Road. And if you all, as a county, have in a plan identified where you'd like to see multimodal, i.e. sidewalks, paths, that sort of thing, we will construct it. We will build it. We will pay for it and install it. But we do need to talk about maintenance for it in the future because NCDOT will not maintain that sidewalk once it's installed. The safe routes to school, I did put in here as well. It has been utilized in the past, but it has run into some funding issues over the years. So in our comprehensive plan now, as it stands, we do discuss complete streets. We do discuss interconnectivity. But unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not going to be able to have our next comprehensive plan until the future. However, an opportunity has arisen, and that's why I'm here today. This opportunity is the ability where the city of Asheville is looking to expand a sidewalk on New Lester Highway. And in order to do that, and they're willing to build it in conjunction with the NCDOT, they need an interlocal agreement that says we're going to maintain the sidewalk in the future. So this is the specific project here. I want to point your attention to the blue and the yellow. So as you can see from the striations in the picture there, that's the city of Asheville's jurisdiction. It'll come up from Westwood Drive, and that's the proposed section. You're probably wondering, well, why is there existing sidewalk to the north? That's because that's an auto parts store, and when it was in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, they had a requirement that sidewalks get built. So as you can see, this connects to an existing sidewalk pattern, and it goes 600 linear feet into our jurisdiction. Well, what does that do? Well, it just so happens that services were expanded on New Lester Highway with the Asheville Rides Transit System. So what that does is, and if you can see the very top here, it gets us much closer to a new stop. So we're slowly and incrementally building out a system in our more urbanized areas. And that is what we're discussing today. If, there's no specific action you'll have to take today. However, if you agree with this presentation and you'd like to see us move forward with working with the city of Asheville to get this sidewalk constructed, we'll bring an interlocal agreement to you on the 18th that would go on your consent agenda. And with that being said, that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
So I just got a comment. I mean, I think if you're going to ring it on the meeting and it's going to be X number of dollars, it probably doesn't need to be in the consent agenda. It probably needs to be in the main agenda where we can talk about it, pull this back up.
Okay. There is no requirement on the county's part for this particular project. There is a maintenance requirement through an interlocal agreement. You get about 20 years on a sidewalk. The one on Emma, the way we're doing it now is we work with general services and they perform a yearly inspection. And if sometime down the road we need to replace a segment, we'll probably do that in-house for that particular segment. But we do need to talk about what maintenance could look like for the county, whether that is work with the city, do it in-house, or contract it out.
So let me ask you a question. Do you think that the city is going to be more? You think the city is going to be more? What's the word I'm looking for? You described that the reason there was a gap was because there was a business there. They required it out in front of it when it was in the ETJ. There's a lot of areas like that.
Right.
A lot. Especially if you, I mean, well, on my way home, there's a lot, you know, on the way to, you know, in Candler, right before you get to the Inca Red Light, there's a lot of places that have set for 10 years or more.
Sure.
Since someone has put those sidewalks in. So have you received any communication from the city that they have any intent to connect those dots? Because those are in the city. Since you've had conversations about Lester, have you heard any more conversation about?
No, so everywhere you're seeing that pattern of where it looks like piecemeal, that means that was a project that was done. And on a per-project basis, they were required to put sidewalk only on their frontage, which left all these broken links, just as you've described. The city has no interest in maintaining those areas that are now fully in the county since the ETJs were abolished. However, it's a good opportunity for us to have a further conversation in terms of long-range planning on how we want to address those issues. We could bring another maintenance discussion back to you all. That's not an issue. But I would look for some direction in bringing forward this particular item to get 600 linear feet started on New Lester.
I mean, I like having the conversation. What I'm saying is, once this conversation opens, we should have discussion, you know, in these areas that are very close to, you know, Inca Red Light, for example. I mean, you know, there's several gaps there that have been there for years. And I know how they did it in the past. But there's not going to be any businesses located between those gaps, you know? I'd just like to hear at some point in time, you know, the city's intent to be able to, you know, what are they going to do to connect those dots later?
I think they have a pretty comprehensive plan on sidewalk construction throughout the city that anybody could look up and would describe, you know, what their priority projects are. And, you know, there's needs all over the city, of course, so they're not going to get to them all at once. But I think they do have a plan.
They do.
That you could check out that describes all that.
They do. And then I think the conversation needs to switch to us to look at, in our comprehensive planning process, how we want to prioritize these areas, whether we want to connect, fill in the connections. If we want to start looking at areas like Swanonoa that are quickly urbanizing and becoming nodes, set up our priorities and goals in our new comprehensive plan and really look at targeting those.
I mean, I want to have the conversation because, you know, in many areas that I go, people are walking in a road.
Right, exactly.
They're walking in a five-lane highway.
Yep.
You know, and so some of these things that have been there for a long time, just want to have a conversation. I'll hush. But thanks for the information. It's good.
So you have a good point, Commissioner, because it will be on us now, not the city to fill in those, because it's no longer the ETJ, which was an extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Well, some of these-
That's something that we can bring forward.
I mean, some of these are in the ETJ, and we ought to look at it. But when we have that conversation, you know, and since I'm on it, I'll just use, you know, Inca and Sand Hill and beyond the Inca Red Light where there's some sidewalks actually in the county. We did some, you know, the first year I was a commissioner, because there was people literally walking in the road. Brownie will remember it. You know, Brownie was part of it. I was, you know, part of it. And we actually was able to bring the city and the state together, and the state had some discretionary funding that was able to do, run a sidewalk. And it probably has saved some lives over the years. But when you drive out there and you, you know, you still see the people walking, you know, what I'm saying is that, I understand the maintenance part. I understand we'll have to do that. But, you know, I want us to have a conversation where the ETJ is and the city meets. There's so many of these places that aren't connected that need to be connected. And whether it's the city or the county, you know, we need to have that conversation. I'm just trying to connect those dots. I understand what Brownie said, you know, you can go, you can see the plan, you know, and all that. But, you know, most people don't want to go see the plan. They just want to know how to get from point A to point B without getting run over. And so you brought it up, so, you know, I'm just putting it out there that we have that conversation. And mostly, it's going to be near the ETJ.
And I think to your point, what we do when we do enter the comprehensive planning process is, you know, we're going to talk to our municipalities, and they're going to be part of, because this is regional planning. It's not just planning within our territory, but we reach across and we look for where those gaps are, and we work together because we are essentially a regional network.
Okay, all right, cool. Thanks.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Nate, let's talk about East Haven.
Sure.
Swanonoa's not a municipality. If you look at the sidewalk, it's going to come out of East Haven, but it's not going to connect to Riverwood, and all that's going to be on the north side of US 70. So now, if you look there at the intersection of Riverwood and US 70, now we've got to go across a five-lane highway to get to Ingalls.
Sure.
And we get to the south side of US 70, there is no sidewalk until you actually get to Ingalls. So who is responsible for putting a sidewalk there? And if it is the county, is it safe to say we're going to have to wait a year or so before we look into that? Because I think East Haven has taken applications now. And I'm just afraid that what's going to happen, people are going to walk to the grocery store, cross a five-lane highway that's 45 miles an hour, and get to the other side where there's absolutely no safe barrier for them to get off the road.
So I think you have hit upon a perfectly valid set of concerns. And the concern here is that we are a county, sidewalks are new for us, and there was no requirement for them before. However, there's a bus shelter that's been constructed now on each side. How do we get people safely to those shelters? How do we put in a crosswalk to get them safely to the store? We're in conversations right now with MHO to look for any available grants. We're also trying to talk with Ingalls and other partners to try to see if we can build out some sort of a pattern there that begins to take more of an urban form.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, but in terms of, I mean, there have been a few kind of discrete projects done individually in the past. But, I mean, the reality is the county has not ever, in a sustained way, been in the sidewalk business.
Nope.
Right? We don't invest in sidewalks or this kind of infrastructure. The city of Asheville invests millions of dollars in sidewalks every year. The county traditionally has not invested in this kind of infrastructure. So I'm certainly supportive of the maintenance agreement concept that you're talking about. If someone else can fund the initial construction and all we have to do is take care of it in the future, that's pretty close to a no-brainer to me. But I do think there's going to be different places outside of Asheville city limits, outside of Black Mountain town limits, outside of Weaverville town limits, that will need safe places for people to walk and get across the street. So I'm very supportive of, as part of future planning, really looking at, you know, getting more in that business. With the annexation laws changing at the state level, the reality is these town limits really aren't going to change in the future, but growth is going to keep happening. And so we're either going to have to accept that people live in places they can't walk safely, or the county will have to play a bigger role in the future. And I'm supportive of that. Other questions or comments? All right. Well, it sounds like there's real openness to this. If the staff would like to take next steps on this, then it sounds like the commission's very interested in hearing more. Do you need anything else from us, Nate? All right, great. Thanks. Great presentation. All right. Speaking of infrastructure, the next item on our agenda is the I-26 aesthetics funding issue. And I basically just wanted to put this on the agenda to have a follow-up discussion from the presentation that the aesthetics committee presented to us at our last meeting. So not to take any votes, but just to kind of talk it through a bit more now that we've had a chance to hear their proposal. And I think the basic questions, and their presentation is on the agenda. Folks want to look that back up as a kind of a refresher. But as the committee talked to us at the last meeting, I think the basic question is, is the county interested in supporting, funding to help advance the I-26 aesthetics committee's goals? And as they outlined in that presentation, the funding needs for the improvements they identified is about $6.2 million for what they consider kind of the most important infrastructure improvements. And then about another $3 million for things they think would be very desirable to have, but maybe not as critical as the others. Potential sources of funding for the project include, the city's going to make a commitment. They hope the TDA will make a financial commitment, and then Buncombe County could participate as well. And there might be some other sources too, but realistically, it's probably those three institutions that are going to need to do this. So I guess the questions I wanted to hear feedback from the commissioners on are, oh, and the other thing is, no funding is needed now, but a commitment is needed in the near future. So the funding would actually have to be invested for probably three years, but the commitment would need to be made now for planning purposes. So I guess the basic questions we need to think through are, are we supportive of these goals? Do we want to participate? And I think the two basic ways we could, the easiest one is to formally endorse the goals and to request that TDA consider funding. So we put this on our list of projects. We're asking TDA to consider funding, which it sounds like they're very open to. And then the second way is to make some financial commitment to the project as well. We've had, I believe, a $1 million item identified in future capital plans in our past budgets, which is not a binding commitment. It's just a, you know, it's a capital plan for future years. So we could try to, you know, kind of really make more of a firm commitment on funding. My sense is that to get to the $6 million goal or above it, realistically, we might need to do a little bit more than what we've had in that capital plan. I don't think we have to figure out an exact number at this meeting, but it's something that I think we would want to explore in more detail as we figure out what the city can do, what realistically the TDA could do. So those are the questions I wanted to just have some follow-up discussion on.
Brownie, just as a quick point of clarification, that 6.2 million and 9.8 million figures, that represents the total funding that multiple parties would bring to the table, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
So Jasmine, I've got the slide up that, I'm going to take this off some talk, that you've got basically two buckets. The 9.8 million is, appears to me, to be an all-in, you know, everything that we could possibly want listed. And then the 6.2 is the better bucket, which is probably the more practical budget. I don't know if these numbers have been, you know, vetted or these are estimates. My guess is they're estimates, which means they could go down or up. Brownie, what's your thoughts on the?
You know, from what the committee said, that they sounded like they've been vetted pretty well. And the other thing that I took away from it is that, at the end of the day, it's the DOT that will do these improvements. And so I think they're basically guaranteeing, you know, since the project's not going to be built for a while, but I think they're basically guaranteeing, if the groups that want to do this come up with the money to fund the different items and commits the funding to do it, they will make sure they get done for not more than that. So if there are cost overruns, I believe that the DOT takes the responsibility for any cost increases that are above that. So I think if we figure this out, then for the amounts of funding listed here, they should make those, they could guarantee those improvements happen.
I mean, I've heard for years discussion about the Bowlin Bridge and about improving the Bowlin Bridge. And somebody could make a lot of money if they invented a mask that didn't fog up your glasses. Can I get an amen from people in the crowd? Yeah? So the Bowlin Bridge has been a discussion for as long as I've been a commissioner. I mean, shortly after, almost eight years ago, you know, I was, you know, part of an ad hoc discussion. Brownie was part of it. And I even remember having discussions about Charleston Bridge, how that bridge looks, and how cities that, you know, would have a nice bridge coming into it. And I think DOT will fund a lot of this. I do think that the totals that I'm looking at, you know, that this isn't all-in, it's every bridge. It looks like that they're really just trying to, you know, get quite a bit done. I think the Bowlin Bridge, once the I-26 comes off of it, that's probably going to be the main, the main point of, if I had to make a list and pick the project, if I was in her shoes, that I would want to make sure happened, it would probably be the Bowlin The others, you know, I haven't heard enough discussion about it to, you know, really be sold, want to wear the other chairman. I mean, the Bowlin Bridge, you know, everybody needs to understand that whenever that work is finished, I may never see it, you know, but I might. That bridge is going to be a totally different bridge. I mean, it's not going to resemble anything like, as far as connectivity and traffic, it's going to be nothing like it is now. So I think most cities have a nice gateway, but, you know, I'm not in a position right now to be able to say that, you know, I would support, you know, X number of dollars, because I don't know what that is. So I don't know that I could say that I would support a certain amount of money right now at all, you know, towards it. I was actually a little bit surprised when they came in, you know, that, because I don't think, there's not been a lot of conversation recently about, I hadn't heard much conversation about the bridge and the aesthetics and some of the things. I mean, it's probably been well over a year since I'd heard anything. So I don't know if there's, you know, if they feel very positive that the DOT is going to be doing this, or, you know, if there's some sense of urgency, you know? I don't know that, I haven't heard that there was.
So, you know, this project has been being planned for forever, for decades, right? So, and I think it has gone on so long, and with all the different fits and starts and funding changes, all these different things, that some people have this perception that this is never going to happen. So the thing is, it's really happening now, right? Like, the funding is there, the environmental impact statements are finished, are being finished up. And this is going to be a, and for all the DOT funding issues around the state, these projects are funded, and the funding's committed, and there's no risk of it going anywhere. So, you know, I agree, there's been a lot of community discussions for years, but it really is moving forward now. And it's a design-build process, so it's, for a project of its size, it's actually going to move quite quickly. Right-of-way is going to start getting purchased, you know? This is happening now. So I think we are at a decision point on it. And this will be the biggest, you know, this will be the biggest infrastructure project that any of us ever see in Buncombe County in our lifetimes. And it's got a lot of really negative effects. It's going to hit these neighborhoods it's going through very hard. A lot of homes are going to be lost, a lot of businesses are going to be lost. And I think DOT and the community have worked together to minimize all that as much as they can. But there's still a lot of adverse impacts that are just unavoidable, you know, with this project. So part of the reason I think this is a very compelling project is that while it will provide benefits in terms of traffic congestion and regional, you know, local and regional, you know, travel through the area, we can get other, this project, I think, is about getting other good things for the neighborhoods and the whole community built into this. So while there'll be some adverse impacts, we'll also see a lot of new, you know, places people can walk, ride a bike, get across town safely. So, and add some beautiful, and make it a more beautiful project. So it is an investment, but I think, as I said at the meeting, you know, let's take the long view on this, and I think these will be investments that we will appreciate in the future. So I'm supportive of a goal of at least trying to get to the 6 million level. Again, I don't think we have to decide how much of that's coming from Buncombe County right now, but if we say we support the goal, and we'd like to sit down with TDA and the city, and maybe others, to figure out, you know, how can we get to that? At least to that number, maybe do some of the others as well. That's my thoughts.
I've been thinking about this a lot, and I'll just kind of share my thoughts are as of today, and look forward to hearing from other folks. You know, I'm supportive of many of these steps. I'm not as supportive of using general funds dollars for it. To me, this feels like a project that speaks perfectly to some of the TDA funding in terms of a large-scale investment of TDA funds, so that we maintain the ability to be nimble and responsive to community needs with general funds, especially as we kind of continue to navigate the very uncertain waters of the pandemic we're in the midst of and its economic repercussions. So if an option is, do you sign on and endorse these as good ideas? Yes. You know, I see the benefits of them, but it's harder for me to get to a place of feeling comfortable, even with deferred payment, making that level of financial commitment based on what I know today. I think the place I could maybe get to, and again, this will be a dialogue, I want to hear what everyone's thinking, is, as Brownie, as you point out, there are some things on here that feel like they really are about human benefit, making it safer and easier for people to have, to walk, to kind of have access to different resources in our community. And drilling down into those elements versus, as much as I like aesthetics and art, you know, it's harder for me to get there on some of the elements that are more purely aesthetic, like art medallions on bridges, for instance. So, I mean, the other thing I'll just put out there, since we're having sort of a more free-ranging discussion right now, is that I think, to me, the big question is, is how do we help our community members who are impacted by the ways this will negatively impact neighborhoods and businesses? I know a lot of effort has been made throughout the long debate on this project to think about that. And to me, if we're thinking about how county general funds can be used to support our community through this project, and I think I voted for this project when I was serving an MPO, so I'm glad it's finally happening, I want to be clear about that. But I'd actually be interested in hearing from a community perspective, whether there are some things around neighborhood displacement or other needs that might be identified where the county could come in. So that's where I land as of today, and we'll look forward to hearing from others and ongoing discussion.
And fortunately, well, fortunately-
Fortunately, well fortunately and unfortunately, there's been a lot of work done around that. That's your thoughts? Thanks. And they have reduced the number of homes being taken, reduced the number of businesses that are gonna be taken, compared to the plans as of, you know, two years ago, through different engineering refinements. But I think, my sense is that, you know, the city's really taking the lead on that, of course, the city's planning staff, and DOT, and a lot of citizens. My sense is they've probably taken that, that work about as far as it can go, right? So, I don't, I don't, I think the process for looking at that is probably mostly complete at this point. Other commissioners' thoughts on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you look at the slide past the buckets, it says 9.8 million, but then it says some costs still to be determined. Now, is, what are those costs? Is that gonna be added to the 9.8? Or, you made it, said it, if there was anything above 9.8, DOT would probably pay for it, but now that's saying some costs still to be determined. I'm reading that, that they're gonna, those costs will be added to the 9.8? And if that, is that, do we know what those costs might be?
I don't have any insights into that other, you know, different from what the committee shared at the last meeting. It's, my takeaway was that the funding around the 6.2 million improvements is pretty, you know, pretty defined, pretty firm, but that there is some, there's still some more planning work being done around the items in the second bucket, is my sense. So, but I don't, I don't have any details on that.
So I'll add one more comment. As a, as a county's representative on the TDA board, the current, current TPDF has about $200,000 in it, so it's gonna be a while before that fund grows to the point where, where we're, unless they, you know, do a finance option, and the new, or we're doing bigger projects. Again, I like the idea of the, of the Bowlin Bridge, you know, Jasmine mentioned a little, you know, I'm not sure I really like medallions, or, you know, and I understand where you're coming from on that. I think that in a time right now, where we're not sure about, you know, funding and funding options, I think it's, you know, that they have to have a match, so the match has to come from general fund, ain't that right, Chairman? I mean, we're, is there other ways to get the match? Am I not, am I not thinking right?
Well, I mean, if the county contributes, I think it would be a contribution from the general fund, you know, that we'd be planning on. So I don't, I don't know that we have some other option for ourselves. Again, we could, you know, one option, I think, I think my, Jasmine, if, what I understood you were saying is basically, let's endorse this, but let's ask the TDA to do a heavier lift on this, this is all about, you know, not all about, but it's, a lot of it is about. What's this bridge look like? It's the gateway into this, into Asheville. And while their, their funds are low now, you know, when the economy was, you know, pre-COVID, generating, you know, $6 million a year, so.
And it can bounce back pretty quick.
Hopefully, hopefully, over the next couple of years, it gets something back to that or close to that, then this is, this is, you know, they could, they could fund this whole thing if they wanted to. But, but I think the best chances of it succeeding are where the city and the county are both contributing, and they do too, because then they see that there's, you know, there's really strong community buy-in for it, and, so I think we should, that's part of the reason I think we should at least do something.
So I think the, the point that I was kinda leading to from a TDA and the amount of money that's there, you know, I wanna make sure that, you know, that I'm, that when I have a discussion about this, that I'm being, that I'm being a good representation for the entire board on that, on the TDA. And so, I would wanna make sure that as we have discussions regarding this, and commitments, or, you know, let them know we're real positive about it, that there would be other, I mean, we need to know what else is out there, that might be competing for this money. And I, and I'm trying to think of things off the top of my head, I can't, I can't, you know, but whether it's recreational needs, whether it's, you know, so many different, I mean, there, there may be some connectivity that associated with this, with Asheville, and even some of the discussion we had earlier, that they might be able to fund in the, in the future. And so, we're gonna, I mean, I'd love to know, get a summary, and maybe we'll have to get that from TDA, on some of the things that are in TMEP, and some of the other things that's been mentioned before, that couldn't get funded maybe a year or two. So, so we're looking at everything at the same time.
Right. And the county does have a list of projects that we've kind of endorsed, so.
Yeah, I just, I'm just.
We could have that circulated, circulated again. Other commissioners?
One thing that I would be interested in is, I know we need to make a commitment, even though funding wouldn't need to be paid for several years, but some type of financial projections, in terms of what our general fund is gonna look like in the next couple of years. I think, for me, that would give me a peace of mind, in terms of how much I would be willing to support. I don't want to lose sight of folks who are impacted by our current situation, and are going to need county programs and services, in the long term, to get past where we currently are. But at the same time, I mean, I've been here since the mid-'90s, and I think this project was talked about at that point, so I wanna see that to fruition. And I do agree that if we come together with the TDA and the city, it does make a more powerful ask, that we're all involved, but I'm really leery in terms of how much to have that conversation about committing until we kind of have some financial projections, if that's possible.
All right.
That's a concern I have, is that we know more, they're more specific on financial projections, because I don't wanna see us giving them a blank check for, you know, what's gonna happen in the future. And let's face it, you know, we're talking about to make the bridge nice, you know, for tourists, sure, coming in, but I don't wanna fund the Cadillac when a Pinto would do.
Sure it's a Pinto?
Yeah. Hey, they'll be hating on a Pinto, some, some people here own one of them.
Well, what I'm saying is, they don't make the Pinto now, you know, they were making it when we started talking about this, so I don't know what'll be there when we get to it, yeah. But I would be, you know, for it, but mind you, we need to make sure we know what we're getting into.
All right. Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I agree there. I think with what we're in right now, that making the commitment'd be hard for me right now, because with TDA, we know how we've been struggling since the COVID-19. I think we're gonna see a couple of years, there's other stuff coming up tonight, we're gonna be talking about finding, and I guess the thing is, is exactly what Commissioner Whiteside said, is our tourists are the ones benefiting the most from this right here, of beautifying the city. We want it to look good. We want everything. This goes back, like Commissioner Edwards says, back in the '90s, 2000, of this new road, and, you know, Brownie, we look back at it, you voted against the 26 connector twice on the city council. I think that's long overdue. Do you get?
I voted, I voted to support it, but to reduce the impacts of it, which we did, and as a member of the MPO, I voted to fund it.
What year was that?
Just to clarify.
And this ain't no argument, this is just what I've read, and I have paperwork that says, well, I didn't understand it then, but I do now.
Well, what we did is exactly what Jasmine was talking about, can we reduce the impacts? DOT was talking about building a 10-lane freeway.
Yeah, it was.
Through west Asheville, which would've taken hundreds of homes. So every, if you go back and look at the resolutions that were passed, every one of them said, we support the project moving ahead, but we asked the DOT to reduce the impacts, so.
Yeah. And we're, we're gonna be affecting a lot of homes here now, and we know which ones they are, over Hillcrack, you know, and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight also, is, where are we gonna put them, and can we still afford it? It's like the city is forcing people out, instead of, you know, the state or anyone. It's very important, I agree, it's important on this 26, but right now, I just can't make a commitment with knowing what funds we've got, and I can't ask the taxpayers to do this right here.
Well, let me ask this, is there anybody on the commission who opposes us asking the TDA to support this to the fullest extent that they can? Just kinda tease these out a little bit. So, does anybody oppose that?
I don't think I could, I'm not opposed to the Jeff Bowlin Bridge, beautification of Jeff Rowan Bridge, if the county is not, you put a lot of money into it, but when that's done, makes a difference in what I would say. Because I'm not against the beautification of Jeff Bowlin Bridge, I can get that. I mean, that's eventually gonna have to be done, and we're gonna, and the DOT's willing to put some money in. But I, I would want to have this conversation along with the other projects that we would be looking at too. And where does this one rise? You know, is, is this one the most important one? I mean, the others may be, you know, half a million dollars apiece, or smaller, or bigger, I don't know, but I'd like to have the conversation. They have, what's their deadline, Brownie? I mean, do you know what's the?
For this?
Yeah, I mean, why they're, I mean, we saw it, what, a couple weeks ago, and now we're looking at it again, so there must be some, evidently there's some urgency, or we wouldn't be talking about it.
Yeah, I believe they said they definitely needed by the end of the year. I think they mentioned maybe November, or somewhere in that timeframe. But I think over the next couple of months, whatever Buncombe County's gonna do, or say on this, we've got, you know, so it's not, you know, the next couple of weeks, I think we've got a couple of months to make a decision about what, you know, what role we're gonna play in this.
Yeah. I think it'd be good for the commissioners to have the other information alongside with this, in order to make a decision.
Well, how about this? Why don't we plan on, is there a good question? So why don't we plan on, we'll put this on the commission agenda, not at our next meeting, I think we need a little bit more time, but in one, maybe in, maybe the meeting after that, maybe about a month from now.
First of September.
Why don't we, yeah, maybe first of September, why don't we put this on a, the commission agenda, we'll have the list of the other projects we're supporting at that, you know, at that meeting, so we can look at that. Because you're right, it's, the funding goes to this, it's not going to something else. And, and we'll also have a follow-up discussion about what, if any, financial commitment we should make. I personally believe we should at least do what we said was in the capital project plans in the past. That's my view. I'd like to actually do, maybe do a little bit more than that, but I think we should at least do that. But, whatever we're gonna do, we just need to make a decision on it. So we'll plan on talking about this again, maybe the first meeting of the, of September.
That's fine.
All right, sound good?
Before we move on, Commissioner, just to clarify, I did hear Commissioner Edwards asked for financial projections, what it will look like for the next couple of years, so she could make a decision. I wouldn't have those details in September, because we'll be just getting our last sales stats for June, so we can talk about it, but I wouldn't have the financial projections to really see the impact on the finance at that time.
When, when might you have, you know?
That will be closer to December, before we will really have that, and I don't know how long the time it is for the city to have a commitment from us. I can follow up and find out what that, they just said, they need a commitment, but they didn't give us a timeline here. I can follow up on that timeline and see if we can connect the two, and bring those data back to you.
Yeah, let's confirm, what's the, what's the latest date that we have to make a decision? If we have more time, maybe we, we'll take it, so we'll know a little bit more about what's happening in the world. And, and if, and if we are gonna wait till later in the year to do something, then my suggestion would be that we go ahead and, and make, make some kind of decision about encouraging the TDA to start seriously considering this. Go ahead and affirm that, and then maybe later in the year, we decide what funding levels, if any, the county wants to be involved in. All right? All right, commissioners, thank you for your feedback on this. All right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion about the proposed casino development by the Kataba tribe proposed in North Carolina. And, so I'll just say a few words, and we've got some folks who are here to, to talk some more about it, but, you know, I think as folks might be aware, a lot of different counties and towns in western North Carolina have adopted resolutions opposing the proposed casino development. So, I put a couple of examples of that on our agenda that you could look at, they're all a little different, but basically they're, they're in opposition to it. And so I wanted to, you know, to see if the Buncombe County Commission might be interested in doing this as well. I believe also most of the legislators from our region, from both sides of the aisle, have also expressed their concerns about it as well. But we have with us today to talk more directly to this, Chief Richard Sneed, who's the principal chief of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee Indians. So, Chief Sneed, we appreciate you being here, and we'd welcome hearing from you on this issue. Thanks for, thanks for coming to Buncombe County this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I appreciate the audience this afternoon. I come to you this afternoon representing the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, and having just come from our council meeting, I feel like this is the longest council meeting of my life. I would, if I, if I may, just give a quick synopsis of how we got to the point that we're at. The Kataba Nation is a tribe that resides in South Carolina. They were, at once, a terminated tribe. They were reinstated with federal recognition in 1993, through an act of Congress, and a legal settlement between the United States government and the state of South Caroli- South Carolina, pardon me. In that settlement agreement, which is available online, it's a fairly short read, I think it's only about six pages long, it is stated clearly and concisely that they are not eligible to game under IGRA, which is the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act. Furthermore, any land taken into trust must be negotiated with the state of South Carolina. If there's any gaming to occur, it will be negotiated with the state of South Carolina. Our legal position is that they're not authorized under the agreement that they agreed to, to move across state lines. About seven years ago, they partnered with a developer, a gentleman named Wallace Sheeves, who, the idea was proposed at that time, that, well, their agreement only applies to South Carolina, and that they should pursue trying to move into North Carolina. They tried unsuccessfully, and have been unsuccessful for the last seven years. We've opposed this from, from the outset. About, probably 10 months ago, a bill was introduced in the Senate, to the Senate Committee on Indian Affairs, by South Carolina Senator Lindsey Graham. It was a very stark and concise piece of legislation, one of the shortest I've ever read, it was about a page and a half long. It simply said that this particular parcel of land in, in North Carolina would be taken into trust, I believe it was 16 acres, for the sole purpose of establishing a casino. We opposed that, that bill was going nowhere, and then, literally out of nowhere, and if you can imagine, nothing ever happens quickly with the federal government, but somehow, the Department of Interior made the determination that that land could be taken into trust for the purpose of a casino, and has since been taken into trust for the purpose of this casino. The Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians filed a lawsuit in federal court in Washington, DC, opposing the action. As is stated by the chairman, many of the counties and towns in western North Carolina have already passed resolutions opposing this. I've been kind of like a old-school revival preacher, going to county commissioner meetings, sharing the story, and so that's kind of the background on it. And what I would like to kind of highlight right now is the, the relationship that exists with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, and Buncombe County, and the city of Asheville, most notably the longstanding and ever-evolving relationship that we have with UNCA. In fact, Chancellor Cable joined us today at our council meeting for a land acknowledgement resolution that, that was passed, and that passed unanimously. And then also, of course, the naming rights with the Civic Center, and the agreement for the Eastern Band to make substantial capital contributions for much-needed capital improvements at the Civic Center. What I would do wanna highlight is the significant financial impact that our casino enterprises have had on western North Carolina. As the commissioners are probably aware, western North Carolina, especially once you get west of Buncombe County, and certainly west of Haywood County, have historically been some of the poorest counties in the state, with some of the highest unemployment. We point to Jackson County, Swain County, and most notably Graham and Cherokee Counties. Cherokee County would see, in the off-season, off-tourist season, unemployment that would spike to as high as 13%, in some years as high as 15%. Since the opening of our enterprise there, unemployment has stabilized at 5% year-round. We have an economic impact study too, actually, that demonstrate the ancillary spend going into the surrounding counties, through contract work vendors, and then the amount of payroll that's going into the surrounding counties exceeds $250 million a year. So it's a significant impact on the counties. I say to, to all of the county commissioners, and city council members that I speak to, and Buncombe would be kind of the standout on that, but everybody west of here, and certainly when you get west of Haywood, whatever happens to the Eastern Band happens to western North Carolina. We are inextricably connected. The fact that this, this casino, if it is allowed to proceed, at minimum, would, we would see probably at $150 million a year loss in revenue to the casino project. Now, we employ 4,200 western North Carolinians at, at both of our casinos, we only have about 400, so just a little under 10% of those employees are tribal citizens. All the rest are non-travel citizens, they're, they're western North Carolinians. And so my ask today would be that you stand, not only with the Eastern Band of Cherokee- And so my ask today would be that you stand, not only with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, but equally as important, stand with the seven westernmost counties in opposition to this, because this is happening to North Carolina as well. And our ask would be that, uh, either by passing a resolution, uh, noting that opposition, uh, and asking the governor to, uh, or more importantly, the Attorney General to weigh in on this. And that would be both on the action of the Department of Interior, and also, uh, on that Senate bill, because even though that Senate bill hasn't moved, it is still at the Senate Committee on Indian Affairs, and could be taken up again. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I do have one. Uh, we've got two resolutions, one from Haywood and one from Swain. Is that all that, uh, did I miss any? Is that the, the ones that have done? Sorry. Um, so, also, since I got, I got a text about the feed, um, people not being able to see it, so you might check that out. Um, so, do you have any more than just the two resolutions, Chief?
Yes, sir. Uh, Macon County has passed one, uh, Cherokee County, I believe, has as well, and Jackson County is poised to do the same.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I will give you the hearty amen to the, uh, somebody inventing a mask that doesn't fog glasses.
Okay.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions right now?
I do. Uh, I know several people here who work over there, who live in Buncombe County. Do you have any figures as to how many people who work, you know, on the reservation there, with the casinos, live in Buncombe County?
I do, Mr. Commissioner. I don't have those with me. I can, if I can get a, an email contact from one of the Commissioners, I, I will send all of that data to you, as well as the economic impact studies.
What's your email?
Mine is R I C H S N E E at N C dash Cherokee dot com.
Just want to say thank you for taking the time to kind of bring us up to speed on this, and I would certainly support taking a step of passing a resolution like this.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Well, I'll, um, thank you, thank you for coming, uh, uh, to talk to us today about this important issue. And, um, yeah, if we could, if we could maybe get some, um, examples of some of the other resolutions. I know there are, they probably have a lot of common elements, but we could look at those, and, uh, draft one that's unique to Buncombe County. Um, and so, um, I think that'll be a next step for us, but we appreciate the chance to learn more about this. And, um, you know, oftentimes, the county doesn't take, doesn't adopt resolutions on just sort of general statewide issues, or general federal issues, but, um, I do think this is a very particular issue that uniquely affects-
Sure.
-the counties of western North Carolina. And for that reason, I think it's, um, it's, um, certainly worth the Commission joining other counties in western North Carolina to support this. So, um, thank you very much, and if there's any other information you want to, uh, share with us, please feel free to do so. I also want to acknowledge Steve Metcalf, who is, who is here this evening. Steve, uh, represented Buncombe County very well for many years, as our county manager, and also represented western North Carolina very well in the state senate. So, uh, Steve, it's great to see you, and thank you for your work on this issue as well. All right, Commissioners, if there's no other questions, we'll, uh, move on to the next, the next item.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
All right. Next up is discussion about boards and commissions, and Mr. Joyner is going to help us out on this, on this item.
Um, I think every Commissioner has been, uh, supplied with the sheet, um, on the act of boards and commissions, it should be in your packet. Um, staff in the, um, the clerk's office, as well as legal, uh, along with the county manager, have, um, came up with some information to try to organize the boards. I think this was the discussion at, um, the previous meeting. And, um, what we've done is categorized, um, each of the boards and commissions into advisory boards, uh, governance boards, and quasi-judicial boards. And this will kind of, um, help, um, navigate possibly how we do interviews, and how we, um, have follow-up for, um, appointments. So, um, if you take a look at that, um, you will also see a, a recommendation there. And, um, if you have any questions, we will be happy to answer. Um, I do have, um, Stacy Woody, who is the deputy clerk as well. Um, she's in the room, um, and, as well as county manager, may be able to answer some questions as well.
So Lamar, your, the general recommendation is that the boards and commissions that are purely advisory boards, those boards will make recommendations to the county commission for future positions, but the, um, government boards and the quasi-judicial boards, the commission will have a policy of determining which applicants we want to interview, and do interviews with those members, and then make decisions based on that. Is that, have I captured that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So why, what's the reasoning for that? Because in, in the past, if we've had, um, and I know it's probably a little frustrating to Lamar, because, you know, maybe we, we seem like we blow back and forth with the wind on some of this, and maybe we do, but, um, just know that when we've had, in the past, Chairman, we've had, if we've, if we've had an appointment of one, you know, then we would typically appoint that, that one person. If we had more than one, and we had a recommendation from the board, then we would take that in consideration, but not necessarily appoint that person. Um, and if we had multiple people that were applying for two positions, if we had six people applying for two positions, then we typically interviewed. And that's been kind of my experience in, in the past. And I don't know why that doesn't, why that doesn't work. I'm concerned that, you know, when we're put in this position to provide input from the community, uh, to help staff these boards, that, um, and I want to make sure we still have that input. I don't want boards just appointing their own people all the time, because that could, that could be a, that could be a problem. Doesn't mean we won't take the recommendations from, from the board members. But I think we have to, I think it's part of our, um, our job description to make sure these boys, boards are properly, um, staffed, not the right word, but properly appointed, so. So that's my, that is, that is my take on it. So I, I mean, I'm looking at this, and, you know, if these, all, all these in blue, which simply means that we would not, that they would just be making recommendations, we would not, we would not be making those, we, we would accept their recommendations. So that's basically just rubber stamping what they're saying.
It, it would still be up to the board. The board still could, um, have final determination on if they wanted to interview for those positions, or are there any questions that, um, were had? I think previously, we had some discrepancy in, um, in some past boards that were recommended, and we kind of went a different way. So we're just trying to give some guidance. So, um, the clerk's office, as well as some of the other boards, could have some type of guidance. That doesn't mean that you, you always gonna have authority over those boards, and have, um, any type of decisions that you make, uh, those boards would have to, uh, adhere to them. But this would kind of give some guideline.
Correct. And as, as Lamar said, when you look at the chart, the advisories, it, we broke it up into three categories, because the governance piece, they're making decisions and running on your behalf, and on the quasi-judicial, those are boards that are making legal decisions and can be appealed on. So we wanted to make a recommendation to you, that those are the boards that you prioritize, that you, because they're making decisions on your behalf, you are gonna interview those, and you know everyone that's on that board. The advisory boards in nature, they just make recommendations to you, they're not running a, an entity, or they're making decisions that are binding on your part. So that's the group that could do interviews of their groups, and send recommendations to you. And we tend to get more people on those boards' applications than others. So if they could narrow down and screen down those numbers for you, and then you make the final decision, but the decision will always lie with the Commissioners. We were just looking for some guidance, to Lamar's point, guidance on what can we tell the boards? Because several of them now, and I'll pick on the library board, or even J.C., J.RAC, they, they did interviews for their group, thinking that that was the way to go, because in the past, they have been making those decisions. So we're looking for some guidance tonight, on how do you want us to tell everyone that you'll interview everyone, or give them some guidelines that they can follow.
And I like this framework, um, and feel like, from a practical perspective, um, folks who are serving on the board are very well positioned to conduct an interview process and bring forth recommendations, and frankly, are often gonna be able to conduct a more thorough interview process than we might be able to in ten-minute interviews that we sometimes do with applicants. So, um, as long as we do have the kind of, um, check and balance of it coming before us for a vote, us having the opportunity to engage and make sure that, um, you know, there's a lot of access and transparency around boards, there's not any of the, um, any of the things we might be concerned about that could potentially happen. I feel comfortable with that approach, and to me, this framework makes sense in terms of the advisory versus govern- governance and quasi-judicial boards.
I agree with that. It also then does free us up to really focus on more in-depth interviews for those governance and quasi-judicial boards. So we really can spend more than, you know, ten or fifteen minutes with each applicant, really getting to know them, and ensuring that we're making the right choices to act on our behalf. So I think this is a great framework, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question, Lamar. Are we holding everybody, uh, to the term limits?
Yes, we are. Um, there are some elements where boards are, or members of the boards are serving a little bit longer because of, an appointment hasn't been made.
Yeah.
And that's part of the policy as well. But yes, um, we are holding, uh, people to their term limits, as well as their term length.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna say this, and I'll hush. Um, you know, I look at the advisory group boards, and there's some, there's important boards there. I would think if they, if an individual serves on that board, that they would, they would probably say, well, Mr. Belcher, we think every, we think our board's the most important. I mean, because they, they are important boards. I just want to make sure that, and I'm hearing that is, that, that this is accurate, that the, I don't mind, if, if we choose to interview, we choose to interview because we've got multiple people applying for the same thing. That's the only reason we end up, we end up doing interviews usually. If there's one person, they've applied for it, and if someone on the board knows them, then that person gets recommended, probably ninety-five percent of the time. I just don't want a particular board, and, and, uh, well, I know this one, and I know that one, will make these recommendations back, back to us. I just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to be able to, uh, you know, make sure we got, and I'm not saying those boards aren't qualified to do that, and they wouldn't do a good job. I just want to make sure that we're, they're all gonna show up on our, um, they're all gonna show up under boards, uh, on our, in our regular meetings, and we're gonna have an opportunity to discuss them and go yea or nay.
Yes, we will.
And, and I agree. I, I think this isn't taking that opportunity for the board to conduct interviews for these advisory boards. I think what we're saying is we're laying, um, some kind of guidance, and if you choose to, definitely, whether it's a recommendation or not a recommendation, you can choose to still interview for these boards.
But we don't do a lot. Let's, let's talk about that for a second, because I, I guess my, my kind of take on it was that if we do do this, if we say to these boards and commissions, for the advisory boards, um, hey, we, we want you to interview applicants, and we want you to make affirmative recommendations, while I think we should reserve the right to, you know, we should, of course, we have to reserve the right to, you know, we have to vote on this, we can always get more information if we need to, if we, but as a general practice, I guess my vision was that we would not interview for those. We would say, we want these, we want the interview process to be conducted by the advisory boards, come up with a recommendation, it comes to us, we absolutely have the decision to make, it's our decision, we could disagree, we could appoint someone else. And maybe if there were a situation where, you know, there was some disagreement, maybe there's somebody who we know that's applied for a board, that we just think, gosh, they're the best person in the whole county to be on that board, we absolutely need them on there. That might be the situation where, you know, we do conduct additional stuff, but, but that the norm would be, uh, for those, we ask, um, the boards and commissions to do it. And then we do it all, for all the governing boards, and all of the quasi-judicial boards, of which there are still, you know, a, a lot. So, um, so that's, if we're gonna do this, that would be, my hope is that we would have that kind of as a general understanding, we could reserve the right to do whatever we want, but as a normal pattern, it would be that they do that process. Because if we started doing it regularly, I think we're just, you know, either, either we should do it, or they should do it. If we're both doing it, then I just think it's, you know, it's consuming even more time, and part of the idea is to get, you know, get a little bit more efficient in our processes. I personally think we either need to do this, or we need to create a subcommittee of the county commission to work on these. Because I just think it's, it's just, if we're doing all of it, and we're really doing it right, you know, really interviewing all the people and going through that process. I mean, over the last couple of, I'd say over the last four or five months, we have spent almost as much time in boards and commissions' interviews as we have conducting the business of this county in our regular meetings. And this is very important, but, but so is a lot of other stuff that requires our attention and work, that I, some, some days at the end of these meetings, it feels like, you know, we've been meeting since noon, and we're all, you know, fried from having, you know, done this. So I, I think we either need a subcommittee of our board to help work on this, or we need a process like this. And I'm, honestly, a person kind of leans towards a subcommittee approach, but I think this is, this is a good approach as well, to at least give it a try. Maybe we try this for a year, we can always reevaluate, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to come, I mean, I, I really like this, because it, we reserve the right to, if we want to interview someone on the advisory board, but I think if we could allow those boards to do some interviews for us, and maybe narrow it down, I mean, because, I mean, let's, we, we give people ten minutes. By the time you ask two questions, it's over with. And then we try to make a decision basis. So if you don't really know them, it's ten minutes, an opportunity to say, we want you to be on a board that's gonna push the initiatives of this county. So I think if we could allow, maybe, as long as we reserve the right to interview whoever we want to interview, which we do, it's, it's on here. And if, if the, these advisory boards say, hey, look, we've narrowed it down to four, we'll reach out to you to interview those four, and give them more than ten minutes to, but, I do like the idea of a subcommittee, but that puts more on a certain group of Commissioners that's gonna, so, but, but I, I think if we're all gonna, if, if some of us are gonna do it, I would like for all of us to do it. So if we're gonna put in the time, let's, because we, we are, we are the county commissioners, and we need to, these boards are important, and, and I like this, I do.
All right. Any other thoughts? Robert, what are, what's your, what are your thoughts on this?
I can read. I agree, you know, we was elected to, uh, do a job, and there was no time limit of how long we were supposed to do it. Yes, we've left here a lot of nights, and been very, very tired, but we asked for it. So, I mean, I think we oughta, we oughta look at them. We oughta, you know, a lot of this stuff, we might not know a whole lot about, and a lot of people in an interview in ten minutes, we might not really learn what they're looking, or how they feel about it, and, you know, I think that's the biggest thing we need to do, is listen to everyone, and make the decisions, and we all should be a part of that.
Okay. Al, what are you, what are your thoughts? Any other thoughts on this?
Um, you know, I have no problem with us being a part of it. I know some of us do work. I don't, so, you know, I have the time. But, you know, on a lot of these boards and commissions, we need to be careful, and I've served on a lot of them in the past, but sometimes, they can form their own little clique. And even though they recognize the, uh, term limits and all, but if you don't pay, if you pay attention, you can end up after one year, having the same people back, and whatever. But I think sometimes, we can be checks and balances on this, uh, the board. And, let's face it, that's why people put us here, to do our job, and to rep- And let's face it, that's why people put us here, to do our job and to represent our constituents.
All right. So can I ask Lamar a question? Lamar, is there, what would, what are your concerns and frustrations around the, the boards? What, what has, so help me understand that, okay? Because my position is, and this is no reflection on yours, mine is, if we, if I see a list of those that have applied for a board, at that meeting, we have decided whether we wanted to interview or whether we didn't. And it, and, and it also included sometime a recommendation from that board that this name and this name be considered, that that was who they would like to see. Most of the time, we went that way, but we haven't all the time. But, but we've always had that information. My, my, and so I, I'd just like to know what your, you know, your concerns, frustrations, what you think would help, you know? Because it's, it's a pretty big load on you too. It's a big part of what you do.
Yeah, and I'll especially say Stacy really manages the board, so it's a lot of, a heavy lift for her. But sometimes what happens is the boards themselves are not sure on how they need to proceed. And one thing they don't want to do, they don't want to interview, and then they would rather spend their time elsewhere if the board is going to conduct interviews. And no slight to the board, but they would just rather know upfront if there's an expectation and how they can proceed. And the clerk's office tend to be in the middle of that and trying to get information from the commissioners on how they should proceed. And sometimes it can change depending on what the situation, which board it is. And so we're trying to decide and, and put them in different buckets, so to speak, as far as what these boards are. And if there's any question with any of the boards and what category they're in, we can always have that conversation as well. We kind of went over this, like I said, within the past couple of weeks. But I think we got pretty much their group in the correct category. But if there's some question with that, we can have that discussion as well.
I mean, I think for me, that what's, what's happened, we've had, now let's say that we've had, I'll just pull one off the top of my head, the, Jasmine, you might be helping on this, the women's commission. And I remember that we had like 26, that might even be an accurate number, 26 that applied for that. We're like, whoa, we can't do that. We can't interview 26. Let's have, let's have the women's commission make a recommendation to us of 13, and we end up picking six, whatever the number is. And to me, that's what we've done in, in the past. If we have a big number, then we've, we've asked for the, for that board to do some interviews and help us out. Now, so the rest of the board can chime in on that and tell me if I'm, you know, right or wrong or.
And, and in the past, we've, we've had a board of two that has only had minimal applicants, maybe even one applicant, and there was a recommendation. And the board decided that it was hesitance on appointing that person. And the board decided a interview process, process would be better. And, and it's up to the board to do that.
I think that's okay. I mean, if.
And so just, they would like to have some guidance, at least to know if this is, I, I guess, a guideline on what's, obviously, the board has any changes that they want to make and want to go forth with interviewing. You can do that. We're just trying to get guidelines. This is not going to take that ability away from you.
And, and I think part of it is just, you know, having a bit more consistency. Because we do kind of, we have, we have some agenda, and then it's like, well, what's the process for making this decision? And we spend a bunch of our time just talking about the process for making that one decision, and then we do it again at the next meeting. So just kind of, it'd be nice if we just had a more consistent approach to, this is what we're gonna do. This is what we want other folks to do. And you can deviate from it if you need to, but not having to figure it out every time again.
So to Commissioner Whiteside's point, that's kind of where I was maybe, you know, I, I wanted to avoid that too, commissioners, that if there was a group and, you know, it kind of, you know, they, you know, maybe there needed to be some change on that, on that board, and it just hasn't been happening because it's, everybody's connected, you know? And I think there's gonna be some of that naturally. We just want to make sure it's healthy, I guess.
But after, you know, talking about it, you know, I agree, and I use that, you know, as a, but we have the ability though to control that when I look at this recommendation here.
And, and I'll say, I do want to at least present the point that these boards and commissions do a good job. This is on volunteer basis, and they spend a lot of time. So I want to do, give a shout out to the boards and commissions that they really do a good job. And they consistently communicate with the clerk's office, so.
The one other point I would want to relay on this is that, when I think about all these advisory boards we have, and we spend a lot of time doing interviews and, and, you know, but honestly, I mean, over, over the last, I mean, and we haven't had a past history of doing consistent interviews. In the past, it's, it has been kind of inconsistent. If we really do say, no, that's, we want the county commission, and that's our job to do that, you know, most of the time, it'll be even more in the future. One of the things I think we don't do enough is actually hearing from our advisory boards. So one of the things, like if we could have a more efficient process around some of the appointments, you know, so we have some of these different groups here that we've never heard from, or it's been years since we've heard from. And we, we can't hear, we've got enough that we can't hear from all of them every year. But I'd love for us to kind of start saying, hey, let's, you know, let's ask some of our different advisory boards to come in and give, give short presentations to the whole commission about what they're doing, things like that. They work with our staff all the time, and that's a really important function. But I feel like we're spending so much time just on the application process that we don't actually hear, hear from them as much as it would be nice to do so. So that's another thing I'd like to throw out there.
If you recall, if you recall, when we redid our bylaws for boards, just recently, our rules, we added reporting into that. We just haven't got, because of COVID, we really haven't scheduled that. But one of the thoughts that we had is the governance and the quasi need to report to you, at least, at least verbally. But the advisory could send a written report in every other year they can come, because you have over 40 boards and commissions that you're dealing with.
Yep. Well, this has been a good discussion, and we're not all in the exact same place, but I think it's good. I think we, you know, we do need to just kind of bring this to a decision point. So, you know, we don't, we don't typically make our final decisions here. So my suggestion would be that we put this on the, the next regular commission agenda, and we'll vote on some of these procedures to just, you know, kind of make a final decision on it, one way or the other.
So can I add just one other thing, since we're looking at maybe making some changes?
Yeah.
To me, if we've got, if we got a reapportment coming up, and even that board makes the recommendation for that reapportment, and that person has made all the meetings, but they still gotta fill out another application, that's crazy. Why would they need to do that when, why, why do they need to do that?
Well.
And I'm not directing that at you, I'm just talking in general.
Just to.
I'm saying that they, I'm making the recommendation that they don't need to do that.
Well, it's very helpful for us to have contact information.
But it's, it should, unless the, then we could say, if the information has changed, then we would require them to fill out another application. If their contact information has not changed, then there's no sense to them to go back in and, and do that again. That's my thought.
And, and that could be the case, but a lot of times, they're not aware of what they filled out two years or three years prior. So it is very helpful for our office to actually get a new application upon reapportment.
Cross commissioner, one of the things we also look at and we can talk about would be if there's ethics violations or any conflict of interest that have changed, they might not be aware. So it's pretty important to get that.
They might not be aware of the applicant.
From what they did two years ago, three years ago, how long were that term is. So it's, it's pretty important to get that updated data for our records as well.
Okay.
All right. All right, if there's no other comments, let's, appreciate everyone's thoughts on this. And the next item on our agenda is an update from Dr. Melendor and Fletch Tove on COVID-19 work.
Commissioner, as Dr. Melendor is coming to the podium, we do have our health director, no longer interim health director, I'm just kidding, here with us tonight. And I'd like to introduce Stacy with you.
All right, great. Hey, thank you, thank you. It's great to meet you, and we're so glad to have you joining the county team.
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Just thank you so much for the opportunity. It's very nice to meet you all. Dr. Melendor has done an incredible job as being the interim health director, and I'm happy to be here to support her and assume the role. So thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you.
So I'm gonna just give a brief update on the trends we're seeing at the national, state, and local level, and then turn it over to Fletch for some conversation. All right, so I'm starting with the national picture. And so this, this data is actually from last night. It's just showing the number of reported COVID cases in the United States. And as you can see, it looks like we might be turning a corner there as we enter August. What's wrong? I'll move it closer to me. Thank you. And when we look at each state individually and looking at cases per 100,000 population, the darker the number of cases, the higher the number of cases per 100,000 population. So you can see that to our South and West, there are states that are definitely seeing more impact on a per capita level. And then in North Carolina, we're sort of in between, in between levels. And what I would say about North Carolina is that as of 12:30 today, we're at 128,161 lab confirmed cases and just over 2,000 deaths. And again, in this, when you look at the, sort of the, the general slope of the, of the EPI curve here, the number of cases reported, well, based on specimen collection date, you can see again, there looks to be maybe a little, we're kind of coming down off a curve.
Is that, is that a maybe, or is that?
It, it's coming down. I'm just trying not to get, you know, we don't know where it's gonna go tomorrow and the next day and a couple of weeks, right? Like, just because it's coming, and also that gray area, you have to remember, that gray box, that, there can be cases that were collected on those days that haven't yet been reported to the system. So we have, always have to remember that there's this, this possible unknown period in the last seven to 10 days.
So, and the reason I ask that is I think it's important, you know, that for, for people to, to have that hopeful position, but still be very safe when they're out and still follow all the guidelines and do that and make sure that they're doing that. But, you know, we've been going through this, and you have, you have been working on this for a while. And it can be, as you know, very, very heavy discussion, very heavy burden, and then people like to see a little light at the end of the tunnel. And so it's pretty cool. It's good, good to see that.
Yeah, and, and the other, you know, one of the other data, this is just one data point, right, that we're looking at. The other data points include the percent of tests that are positive. And so, because that tells you the level of community spread. And so North Carolina, when we look at the state as a whole, that percent of test positive has ranged from like 7% to 10% over the last month or so, and we're still at 9%. So it's still higher than we want that. Ideally, you'd want to see it under 5%. And then this is the COVID-like illness syndromic surveillance, sorry, this, this is from the state's dashboard. It's not the sharpest image. But this is telling you like what percent of emergency department visits across North Carolina are for COVID-like illness. And so signs or symptoms that could indicate COVID-like illness. It doesn't mean they tested positive. It's just they, they meet certain triggers in emergency department records like document, documentation of cough, shortness of breath, respiratory distress, and fever, temperature, or chills. And so the red line is where we're at currently. The, the gray lines down below are from prior years. And in prior years, we didn't have COVID, but we remember that influenza-like illness looks very much like COVID-like illness, and so that's what that is showing. And so you can see that throughout June and the initial part of July, that, that percentage was increasing. And there's been, for that most recent week, a downturn. But again, we need to see where this continues to go. When we look specifically at Western North Carolina emergency department visits, we're, we're now looking at the gray line for this current year. And you can see that we're still, we're still seeing a trend up. And this data, we, the other thing to keep in mind is this data is always lagging. So this is for the week ending July 25th, right? Because it takes time to, to pull this data from, for this data to be recorded in the hospital systems and then be pulled from the, the system NC Detect that monitors this. Hospital data, so this is, I mentioned to you previously that this is now available on the state website. So this is data specifically for the Mountain Area Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, which is our Western North Carolina region. It comprises the 17, it's comprised of the 17 westernmost North Carolina counties. And so this is a screenshot from today showing the number of patients currently hospitalized in the Western North Carolina region for COVID-like illness. And you can see how that has, you know, trended up over the month of July. But sort of, you know, in these sort of steps, kind of plateau steps. And then the bottom line is the number of patients, adult ICU patients with COVID-19 diagnosis in these hospitals. So again, it's, it's not been the dramatic increase we've heard about and seen in other, other states. It's been kind of like a slow increase.
Dr. Melendor, a quick question.
Yes, please.
Could you go back one slide?
Yeah.
Now, is that, but at the chart at the top, is that in essence the same data as, could you go back one other slide? The slide before, these are kind of showing the same information. Is that right?
This is emergency department visits. So these people weren't necessarily admitted, right? And this is COVID-like illness. This is not lab confirmed COVID. This is just people who, it's, they came in with symptoms that could have been attributed to COVID. And then this is people who def tested positive for COVID and were actually admitted and hospitalized on the top.
Got you, got you.
Okay? And then the bottom is the ICU admissions, adult ICU admissions. And then also available on that state website is this sort of capacity. So the top is looking at ventilators. The darker blue is the number of ventilators that are in use. The lighter blue is the number that are available. So you can see capacity still very strong in terms of ventilators. The next, the middle is showing intensive care unit beds. And again, dark blue is in use. The light blue is empty and staffed, and the grayish is either beds that would be unstaffed or just weren't reported. And then the bottom is just regular inpatient hospital beds. So again, there's, there hasn't been a, you know, it's been pretty steady, the capacity, and it's still, you know, we have lots of capacity in the Western part of the state, which is good news. Then when we drill down into Buncombe County, so this is from our dashboard. This is looking at the number of lab confirmed cases by data specimen collection. And again, you can see, again, there's that gray zone where, you know, specimens collected during that time may not have yet been reported to us. But maybe we are, maybe we're, we're going in the right direction. But again, it could be that I'm, you know, those, those labs get reported to us and that, those numbers go up. So that's why I'm saying maybe, right? I'm trying to look at the data and not get too.
Dr. Melendor, is this where we, what is our percentage of tests to positive?
Yeah, so we are stable at five. We're expecting some data today from the state. Usually on Wednesdays, we get our updated data from them, and I haven't seen that yet. And I don't think that the new health director has seen it yet, so. But we've been pretty steady at five for the last little bit.
That's great.
So yeah, so we're today at 1,726 cases and 46 deaths. And the demographics, you know, nothing's really changed there in terms of, we're still seeing a majority of the cases in that young adult, 18 to 49 age range, and still disproportionate impact on our Hispanic community and other, you know, populations of color. This is from the state dashboard.
So when you say that, is that, you just said state.
This is from the state dashboard, but this is for our county.
For our county.
This is Buncombe County demographic data for cases.
Forty-six deaths?
Forty-six deaths currently, 38 of which, 39 of which have been residents of long-term care facilities.
So we had, we had seven outside of that. I mean, all of, all of that's, all of that's tragic, but we're, we're well below the national and state average as far as non.
Outside of hospi, or outside of facility deaths? Is that what you're trying to?
When was the last time that we? When was the last time that we had a death in Buncombe County?
Recently.
Recently?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we're like adding, like, I don't know. It's a slower increase in the deaths, right? I mean, we had a big increase in the front, and that was because of a long-term care facility outbreak that was really big.
I'm not minimizing at all. I'm just trying to get your information.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, again, this is, I just pulled the, these are from the state dashboard, because again, it shows like comparison to other counties. So, the top is the number of cases per each county. And so, again, we've talked before about how the data on our dashboard and the data on the state dashboard are gonna be a little different. They're never gonna be exact, just because of the way data is pulled and the timing of when it's pulled. So, the state has 1,741 cases, still 46 deaths. And then, the bottom graph is looking at the percent positive, right? So, we're at 5%, the state as a whole is at 9%. You can see the darker the color, the higher the percent positive. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see where that goes for this most recent week. And so, you know, when we're looking at our trends, again, that, until it's proven to me, I'm gonna, still gonna say, we're gonna keep it in red in terms of the number of cases, right? And the percent positive, we want that below five, right? We're stable at five, which is good, but I wanna see it come down.
I have a question, Dr. Melandor. So, if the, if the percent positive is still around five, I know that has grown some over the last, say, 30, 45 days.
Yeah.
But, it's still five. But, the number of documented cases we have, like compared to six weeks ago, is so much higher, and like the number of people in the hospital is so much higher. So, it seems like there's kind of a little bit of a, kind of a disconnect between, like, the percent positive seems to have not grown that much, but then the number of cases and hospitalizations is so much higher. Could, what are your thoughts about why one seems steady and the other is we see so much growth?
Right. Well, some of it is to like, how much testing are you doing, right? It's all on the community, and we've, you know, the, you know, over 4,000, over 5,000 tests are being done, have been being done weekly in the state, in the county over the last several weeks. I think hospitalization, yeah, it was interesting, because there was a lot of curiosity about, if we're seeing cases in younger people, will that mean we're seeing less hospitalizations, right? Because we think of younger people potentially maybe not having the underlying health conditions, and therefore, maybe hospitalizations won't be impacted. Yeah, I mean, it does, I see what you're getting at, yeah.
It does seem like such a big growth. I mean, throughout much of this, you know, since March, I mean, throughout most of this time, there's been, you know, maybe four, or five, or six people being treated over admission at any given time. I mean, there's 40 now.
Yeah, and I mean, it was, it bumped up.
That's a big.
Remember, it bumped up to about 20s. They were hanging steady. That's, I mean, it's kind of been stepwise, right? So, they increased, and maybe we're having like 20s, and then it kind of bumped up into the 30s. And now, it's kind of, you know, high 30s, sometimes to 40. But, it's not that trajectory that we've seen in these other states, where it's just been, you know, a dramatic exponential increase in those states where they've just, the outbreak has been out of control. So, it sort of implies to me, maybe we're like, it's a controlled, that maybe the efforts on the face coverings, the efforts on the social distancing are helping like keep that under control. Maybe it's also too when people are seeking care, when they're, you know, their access to reach medical treatment. It's hard for me to like pinpoint one exact thing, but I see what, I hear what you're saying.
Alright.
So, hospital capacity, like I said, is looking good. Tests completed. Again, there's lots of testing availability, and lots of like newer labs are coming online in our community, smaller labs that providers have switched to. Lab course turnaround time has finally, has improved. We're hearing they're down to two-to-three day turnaround time. So, that's all good news, going in the right direction there. And then, you know, we still have our contact tracers working really hard to reach all those contacts. We looked in the system, and in June, we had entered maybe like around 500 contacts into the system for the contact tracers to contact. And then, for the month of July, that more than doubled because our cases went up, right? So, we still feel good about our contact tracing capacity.
Dr. Melandor?
Yes.
Contact tracing, is there any way to know how many of these cases are travelers?
All of these cases are Buncombe County residents, remember?
So, they're all Buncombe County, so they all live here?
It's all county of residence is where you get counted.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, if someone is traveling and they get it, they'll be, those numbers are counted back in their home county, even though they were hanging out in our county for some period of time.
But, we know they were here, correct?
We do, so, this is where it gets tricky, right? So, because they're reported to their county of residence, we may, if they, depends on where they got tested and how that provider handles it, right? So, if they came here, got tested locally by a medical provider, that medical provider might reach out to us, because they don't know the county health department where they're from, right? So, they might reach out to us, and then we, if it's another county in the state, we'll share that with that county, or if it's another state, we share it with the state, and the state sends it back. So, it becomes to our attention then, but there's no internal tracking system for that necessarily. If they came here, went home, got tested at home, we would never know about it, unless there was something that their case investigator, you know, dredged up in their investigation that would make them say, hey, I need to tell this county because of a contact investigation that might happen. And that, that doesn't really happen that much at all.
So, somebody that came here to stay in a hotel, goes home and gets tested, that hotel staff doesn't know that they have it?
So, again, it depends on their case investigation, and when that person, you know, if that person identifies contacts, right? And again, contacts, you have to be within six feet for 15 minutes or more. So, it all depends on what that investigation turns up and what that person divulges.
But, there's no requirement for that kind of thing. I mean, it's sort of at the, like, if someplace is just really on the ball and super proactive, maybe they do that, but there's not like some legal requirement or some consistent mechanism.
There are some states that aren't even doing contact tracing.
Some states are really overwhelmed, right?
There are states that aren't doing contact tracing.
It's just, they're not doing it.
Yeah.
Because they can't, really.
Right.
Well, may I ask this?
Yes.
Are we doing it?
Oh, yeah.
So, we are, so if someone comes, travel and come back, we're gonna let somebody know in another state?
If, again, if they are determined to be a close contact, and we have their contact information, we will, our contact tracers will reach out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, you know, as I've mentioned in the, in the community updates, the big testing and contact tracing are important, but when we're really looking at this phase of the pandemic, it's these preventive strategies. That's where we're gonna really have the impact. And so, that's why people keep hearing us talking about this, and that's why you're all in your face coverings, is this is where, this is where we're gonna make sure that that curve gets turned and flattened. And so, I'm gonna turn it over now to Fletch to talk a little bit more about some possible, do you have something?
One quick question. First of all, thank you for the update. When you last presented to us, you said that, you know, what we were primarily seeing in terms of trends around cases was gatherings, people getting together with family and friends, parties, those kinds of things. Does that continue to be the primary thing you're seeing in terms of spread?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's community spread. So, like, it's households, it's going to work, it's just, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
There's not one.
Right, okay.
Thing.
Thank you.
Dr. Melandor, one more question. Is Fletch gonna talk about testing, or is that a question?
Oh, I can talk about testing, yes.
Are we gonna, August 9th, we're gonna go back to community testing?
Yes, yes.
We are, so we have a?
We are frantically finalizing things. Nothing, nothing is ever easy. But, we'll be announcing that on Thursday, the specifics. But, what I'll say is there will be some pre-registration required, and the goal of that is to make it more, make sure we're testing who needs to be tested, and we aren't, we're making it a more streamlined process, right? So, that we're not backing, you're not gonna have to be out there on 70 directing traffic. But, but again, just to make it more user-friendly and useful, right? To ensure a good turnaround time, that these results are actionable. Okay? Yeah.
Good afternoon. So, here, talked about some potential enhanced mitigation strategies. Currently, we're under Executive Order 151 from Governor Cooper, which is set to expire this Friday. That, if you can recall, that's an extension of Phase Two, harkens us back to Executive Order 141, as the current measures were under. We don't have any indication yet from the state which direction we'll go, but we can, looking at the data, the same data that the state's looking at, we can imagine an extension of that pause or staying somewhere in the Phase Two. So, we want to talk about some proposed mitigation strategies, Stage One, while we're here in Phase Two. What we're looking at, as we get reports and we make observations, and through the ready team or through phone calls to law enforcement or, you know, the county agencies, we get reports of where we're seeing the most incidence of people either not observing the physical distancing requirements or the face covering requirements. One of our main problems now is restaurants, which are fundamentally bars, but because they can serve, they produce food, they're operating under restaurant guidance. So, we have several places around the county where we're getting reports, and we've observed that late at night, they're not, looks like they're not complying with their capacity limitations. Nobody's wearing masks, people are packed in. So, we're trying to focus down on some trouble spots there. Recently, the governor issued Executive Order Number 153, which specified that at 11:00 PM in the state, serving, served alcohol sales stop. Recommendation would be that we could go earlier than 11 for, say, 9 o'clock. The idea is, it focuses specifically on those trouble stores, which are fundamentally operating as bars while bars are closed, that aren't restaurants. We think it's reasonably a late enough hour that people can still, you know, go out to dinner and have their drinks, but it's gonna kind of remove incentive for that kind of socializing that we're seeing people just kind of loiter at these sites, as if it was a normal, if it was last summer, it'd be a different issue, but this year, it's not acceptable for people to be loitering in those closed quarters for hours at a time without masks, without social distancing. Another problem area we've seen is gyms. Per Executive Order 141, gyms are ordered to be closed. However, we know there are several operating under some guidance that if their patrons have explicit directive from a medical provider that they need exercise, that they could operate at that gym. We know several gyms in the area using that. What we want to emphasize with them is that they need to actually view documentation that they have an actual medical exemption from a healthcare provider, not that, it can't be their personal trainer telling them they need to work out to lose weight. This does not qualify you for this medical exemption to go to the gym. It needs to come from a doctor, a primary physician, saying, whether it's, you know, recovering from some kind of surgery or some dire health circumstance that requires them to exercise. We also want to enhance language around face covering ordinance to make it clear that in Buncombe County, wearing a face covering is the rule. Particularly, we want to focus, there's been some ideas that we should make it very clear that kind of downtown Nashville is a mask face covering area, where if you're outside on the sidewalk, you know, in storefronts, you still need to be wearing a mask. I think there's some, some places, it's not very clear. Some places, that little bit of, is a little ambiguous, and people are taking advantage of that. I think we could discuss some language that makes it very clear that downtown Nashville, you're wearing a face covering. Buncombe County, it's the rule. You can still make an exception for the governor's order, but the exceptions are not the rule. The rule is you wear them. If you have an exception, you don't wear a face covering.
So, why would we treat downtown different than the rest of the county?
Because from the reports you're receiving and from observation, our main trouble spot for non-compliance with both this and the distancing is downtown Nashville during the day and the night.
So, if they're on the sidewalk and they pass somebody, so you're saying if they're on the sidewalk, they need to have a mask on? Even if they're six foot away from, now, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying, you know, that that recommendation is a possibility?
That would be the extent of the proposal, using whether it's downtown business district or, you know, whatever parameters, but just making it very clear through language, through a campaign, which I'll share, that our, that the area we see the most non-compliance with the orders is downtown Nashville, particularly in the evening, but also during the day.
As part of the concept, Fletcher, just that, as I understand, the governor's order basically says you need to wear face masks in situations where social distancing is just basically not possible. And in downtown Nashville, it's part of the idea, it's just such a busy area, that the reality is it's not possible to be socially distanced. If you're down there during most daytimes and evenings, there's just so many people, like realistically, you can't socially distance in that kind of dense urban downtown environment.
Correct. And if you just, you observe for yourself, like during the afternoon or evening down there, you just see gaggles of people, like probably primarily tourists, but still just a bunch of people grouped up, not observing the ordinance. So, we're trying to focus on those specific trouble spots that have been reported to us or that we've observed. I'd like to real quickly share you, in conjunction with that, we've been working, Stacy Wood, who is our Information Officer in our AOC, and her Public Health Communications Team, have done a lot of really great work. We've done Facebook campaigns, we've done billboards, we've done, you know, working on radio PSAs, flyers on the buses. You may have seen signs on corners all around town, all around the county. But, I want to share on the latest PSA they developed. Max, do you want to pop that up real quick?
My mask protects you. Your mask protects me. COVID-19 can spread even if you don't have symptoms. Wearing a face covering is the best thing that you can do to help stop the spread of COVID in our community. Wear a mask to save the life of a neighbor, friend, or family member. We work hard to keep our community safe. Do your part to protect us. Wear a face covering.
So, that PSA was just completed, sharing it here, and then we'll be pushing that out pretty hard later this week and next week. Well, I'd like to get into next, and we come back to this discussion, is potential triggers for where we go to a second stage of mitigation measures. This isn't anything we're proposing yet, but just things we're contemplating, looking down the road if the situation continues to worsen, our data trends don't support, you know, maintain the course as we are now. If we see our test positivity rate come back greater than the state, data trends projecting that we reach 50% of ICU capacity for COVID-specific patients admission, having less than a 30-day supply on hand of PPE for healthcare workers and first responders, an acceleration of our positive case count, or a change in monitor trends that was drastic enough to cause this concern. And those monitor trends, all those four trends the state's watching, we're also watching locally. So, here's some potential mitigation strategies down the road if we don't see the changes we need. We could go back to restricting lodgings, bookings by either geography or the A28 area code, as we've done before. As we also had before, we had limits on lodging capacity at 50%. We're discussing potentially fining at the individual level, not just the organizations or business, but fines for individuals who refuse to comply with face covering mandates. Fine businesses that refuse to post the required signage. Per Order 141, they require the post-signage about face coverings and other measures on their storefronts. I think we have a pretty high percentage of compliance with that, but there are some who don't have that posted. And then, as we also had, we dropped off several months ago, but reinstating a requirement for a 14-day quarantine for travelers from outside the state. And we could specify that for, by specific other states or regions or however we determine best at the time. So, clicking back here, these are proposals for now. What we'd be looking at, which we consider us to do further mitigation strategies, and then what some of those might look like.
Alright, is that your whole presentation, Fletcher? Alright, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions?
So, commissioners, we're looking for guidance, because you know that our current order aligns with the governor, which expires on Friday. So, if you would give us some guidance, so we know where we go after Friday, that will be helpful.
Great. So, I'll jump in first. So, I appreciate the updates. I appreciate the recommendations the health staff have outlined. I am, I'm supportive of them. I can't, nobody knows. I can't, nobody knows exactly what the state will do this week. I'd be, personally, I'd be really surprised if they opened up a lot of additional commercial activity. It's good that the numbers have leveled off and maybe are even going down a little bit. That's, that's encouraging, but they've been growing consistently for, you know, six to eight weeks. So they're leveling off at a very high number. And of course, the hospitalization numbers and fatalities are, you know, have continued to go up. So it'd be surprising to me if the state did something to open a lot more commercial activities up. So assuming that the state continues the policies they have at this time for an additional period of time, of course, we'll follow that. In the unlikely event that they did allow a lot of additional commercial activity, you know, I believe that Buncombe County should stay where we are for now because of the significant growth in cases and hospitalizations we've seen over the last four to six weeks. Again, that doesn't seem like a very likely scenario, but if, if it did happen, then I would not want us to automatically open a lot of, a lot of other commercial activities that are, you know, I wouldn't want to change that right now without at least thinking that through. So I wouldn't want us to, you know, to make that automatic. So those are a few of my thoughts. Other commissioners?
Fletch, a question. Where we, help me, remind me where we're, where we are stricter than the state. I don't think we are now, are we?
No, we're currently aligned with the state. The, the last iteration, we've removed any places we were more severe.
So, I mean, my position would be unless the state did something reckless that I wouldn't agree with, you know, that we should just stay where we're at, you know, I, the reason I asked you about Asheville is if I go to Balmoral Park or I go to, you know, just a lot of places, a lot of different places, I mean, I'm seeing people wearing these now. When you're out on the sidewalk, what I've seen is some people will have them on the entire time, but some people, you know, will carry them. And then if they get, if they see their family getting close to someone, then I've seen them, you know, pull the mask up or put a mask on or whatever. Or if they're outside and they're getting ready to go in the store, they'll put the mask on, you know. So I, I mean, I'm seeing, you know, a lot of, a lot of good habits out where I'm, out where I'm at. And I'm not downtown as much, but I am, I am downtown some. But anyhow, my, my preference would be unless the state does something reckless that we just, you know, we hold where we're at. So I think we're being pretty effective.
How would you define reckless, sir?
Don't know until he says it. So I'm just saying with it, I think Brownie said the same thing, that, you know, we're, I'm okay where we're at right now and I don't see us, you know, doing something different, you know, Friday or in front of, you know, what, what he says. If, if he, if he, if the governor of the state does something reckless, we can always push a button and have a meeting if we have to. But I, I don't, I don't think we move from where we're at right now.
Just one clarification, though. So the one recommendation that the staff are asking us to consider for now is the restaurants that serve alcohol and requesting that they not serve alcohol after 9 o'clock in the evening, whereas the state says 11. So that is a request that, that's something that we could go ahead and put in place at this time.
Correct. That was the, the one tangible mitigation strategy we had in place for now.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, Jasmine?
Thank you for the presentation. I would support the implementation of that mitigation strategy as well as the other sort of action steps you outlined. Sure. So I would, I would support the moving the time up to 9:00 PM and then the communication work with gyms and members of the public and businesses. And, and like others would like to see what happens on Friday and, and make an informed assessment. I really appreciate the kind of forecasting y'all are doing around the triggers that we want to be attentive to as we look ahead. So that's where I'm at today. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Based on contact tracing, do we know how many folks have traveled out of Buncombe County on summer vacation, family reunions, and are coming back with COVID-19?
Coming back with it or coming back?
In coming back and testing positive after having been to the beach and some places where there are some hotspots.
Yeah, I had looked that up for a media request last week and I'm trying to remember. Let me, let me look in my emails.
That's fine, thanks, Dr. Millenore.
So I think, you know, Fletch, you the one, I mean, what, what I've heard, you know, I don't know if anecdotally is the right word or not, but what I have heard out in the, in the public is that, you know, there's been situation or it may be where people have been outside and they've been gathering and they've been distant and then maybe it rained, you know, and had to go inside and then, you know, there's been, you know, possibly contact there. I think so general advice, you know, for, for people to, you know, to have your gatherings outside, you know, to, I mean, you know, keep it within your immediate family, you know, as best you can and continue that, that kind of guidance, that kind of precaution and to be, I mean, don't be, you know, if, if it rains, instead of everybody running inside, everybody needs, you know, go to the house and leave the presents, you know, there, you know, for the birthday parties, things like that, just use that good common sense. But I'm, I'm not, I don't think I'm in favor of making any changes until, you know, I hear what's coming out of the, you know, state, so.
That, that's a very good point. And I just remind everyone, currently, you know, outdoors, our mass gathering guidance, our limit is 25, indoors it's 10. I do want to, as we get, you know, end of summer into fall and weather is less than meaningful to being outside, you know, there's a concern as, you know, people who would be able to have these events, whether it's a outdoor yoga class or outdoor family gathering, we'll start moving indoors, we see more rain with hurricane season, as we see colder weather. So there's a concern, but just remind everyone, 10 people is still the limit for an indoor gathering.
So I'll just give it a little personal information. For the first time in 50 years, my wife's the youngest of 14 and they have a family reunion where they gather. And because of the age of those that are still surviving, that family reunion did not happen this year. And people are making difficult decisions and I think a few of them gathered, but they gathered, but instead of 100 people coming together, it was about eight, you know? And so I think people are making those safe decisions, so. But we need to, we need to make sure they understand that.
All right, any other commissioners that haven't commented yet?
I, I want, Fletch, the mitigation strategy, the 9 o'clock, is that based on that we're seeing outbreaks in these bars? Or is that, so we are, through contract tracing, we're seeing people conjugating in these bars? You haven't seen COVID?
We, we know some staff at some of these restaurants have tested positive.
Okay.
But I, I would say, we don't, we don't have hard data on this time recommendation, but we do, we've seen reporting, one that rings a bell for me is the BBC reported a couple of weeks ago that, I think the headline was, it's crystal clear when alcohol is involved, social distancing doesn't happen.
We, we, we know that, but.
It's coming from BBC in London?
So, see, that's, yeah. I just don't want it to be where everybody thinks, okay, we got to 9 o'clock, so we all just rush in, you know? I just want to make sure that the data's driving the, the actual strategy.
And we had some discussion about that and I think 9 o'clock's a reasonable time with the majority of dinner hours. You can still have social drinks. And we talk about these small sacrifices, maybe you're not having that second glass of wine because it meets the time limit or maybe you're just planning ahead. And to be clear, this doesn't restrict sales from like a grocery store. This is just point of service where you would receive an open beverage, like at a restaurant or, you know, breweries, things like that.
All right, any other comments or questions from commissioners? So.
I just have an answer to your question.
Yes.
So, and it's, you know, it's a little dated, but it was about 5.4% of people had reported travel to, out of state to an area where either a hotspot, for lack of a better word, or where then they later found out somebody in that group they visited had tested positive. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. So commissioners, just so we're kind of, make sure we're all clear on the process. So don't know exactly what the governor's gonna do. Probably it stays pretty similar to what we're seeing now, but we don't, we won't know it till we know it. But our anticipation is that if the state continues the current policy framework, of course, we'll basically continue that as well with the one policy difference being we're gonna have an earlier time to stop selling alcohol in restaurants compared to the state policy. Restaurants can still stay open. If you are getting a late dinner, things like that, that's fine. But basically, we just don't want the restaurants turning into bars later in the evening. And since we do have, you know, we do have a lot of tourists here. We're not like every other town in the state. There are a lot more people who are coming here to go out and get some of the delicious beverages that are manufactured in our county. So we do, I think there is good reason why this could be a, you know, a more significant concern here than in your typical town around the state. I know the college towns are also, I think that's kind of where the idea first came from, right? There's a lot of concern that the college towns, you'd see a lot of problems there too. So, so that's, that's the expectation. So any other, any other questions before we adjourn? Of course, we're a little bit after 5 o'clock already. All right, why don't we take a 10-minute break and then we'll start our regular meeting? All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you.